This meeting will come to order at 5:35. Called to order by member Bob Taylor. And we will now stand with the pleasure of meeting please.
Just to set up ground rules for this meeting, I'm sure you're familiar with them. I'm just going to refresh your memory. Disorderly conduct consists of engaging in any violent, abusive, indecent, profane, boisterous, unreasonable, loud or otherwise disorderly conduct which tends to disrupt peace. I have two microphones on me. Anybody that is offended in this room, it's not going to be towards me. But if two people think that it's offensive, you'll be asked to leave the property within five minutes. If you're not, you will be charged with disorderly conduct. Question?
It's very difficult to hear back here and we can't, there's not enough room. So if you would, would you please speak up loud?
Sure, thank you.
We had people come up before the meeting started who was asking if we could move to the cafeteria because there's a bunch of people in the hallway. Is that possible after executive session or whatever?
Sure.
Sure.
This is y'all's meeting, I'm still...
You know, we're well prepared for it. Actually, I hope he was there in the future and we just never did it.
How do we set that up though? Is that room open?
Yeah, I don't think there's tables out there.
I don't think there's tables out there or any of that kind of...
Is there enough room? I know it's, we'll talk loud, is there enough? Do you think there's enough room to get in here?
No.
There is not an angle outside. You need a thicker or bigger room.
Excuse me, sir.
The whole hall is full.
I just don't know if we can, who can open it up for us and if there's an ability to set that up.
How close can we stand up here? Because I'd be happy to stand from further than this.
Well, it's going to be a long meeting. I don't want people standing too much. When we go into executive session, I'll talk with Odilia and see if we can run down there and if we can make that happen. Okay?
I don't know what we have.
Do we have, we have the table from the front of the...
Do we have...
We can, I mean, we can go second. No problem.
All right. I mean, a motion to go into executive session, please. I'll make the motion. We have a motion to go into executive session. We have a rule called both plates. Stand up.
Yes.
Stand up.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we will go into executive session now and as soon as we're over, we'll check and see.
I mean, if I come motion has to be legal...
I have a quasi correction for the October 26 meeting. Technically, unfortunately, the phone is not working well and so when I try to say something...
Okay, in the last meeting, we had some questions that were unanswered and we promised at that time that at this meeting, those people who had questions and were not heard would be heard at this meeting. We're going to keep our word to do that and so we're going to open this up with an open forum for question and answer. Now, we would like to limit your questions or answers to three minutes, please, because we have a lot of people in here and we would like to get out of here before midnight if so. Prior to opening it on the forum, Mr. Manalis would like to have a few words.
They're not going to be a few words. This is going to take a long time. I'm going to be real serious with you. You showed up last week, we couldn't talk. I was embarrassed because people showed up and we couldn't talk. But we're being taken to task for not following the open meetings act and then we try to follow it and we lose either way. So, we made a deal. Alyssa, are you still here? Estrada?
Right here.
There you go. She came up with some other people and said, "Aaron, I have questions." I said, "I can't answer." Well, we're going to answer. You have a right as a public, we're elected, you need to have your questions answered. That's the way it works. But unfortunately, our hands are tied because if you're on an agenda, it states specifically, you cannot talk about things that are on the agenda. It's a fact. So our hands were tied last week, they're not tied this week. Now, everybody has gone around and said, "We have a letter from the Secretary of Education accusing you of this, this, this and this." People have asked, "What does that mean?" Well, our first report was, "The attorneys have to hold on to this, the attorneys have to do this." I called the attorney today and said, "I can't do it." We can't do it. You can find this in court, but we've got people that are walking around that have no clue what's going on or they're hearing only one side and so what I did is I sat down. You guys bear with me. You really are. This is coming out as best as I can. You guys have a right to know all this. I'm going to give you our reply, our thoughts. It's not a debate, I'm just going to give it to you. You know, if you disagree, that's fine. If you want to do something else different, that's fine. But all this is, is to bring you up to par to these allegations and our response in general, I'm not getting real legal, but I'll give you every document that I can. Personalities, we can't talk about. We can never talk about personnel. Never, never, never. Can't do it. So anything with personnel issues other than us, we can't talk about. About us, you got it. So you guys deserve, you people, women, children, students, men, you deserve to know what we think of the letter that's accusing us of doing these things. But what you first need to know is, the question is, why? How did this all just get crazy? So I sat down and tried to do the note. We've gone and talked to this candor many times, but I'm going to give you a brief history directly. We got paid for our buck. We got a guy to come in and work for half of what we were paying before. The reason we only, it's not a debate. The reason we're doing this is to let you know what happened. Now, whether you agree with how we did it or not, I'm not going to argue that point. But our point was, is we wanted to get somebody in here, we got him for a good price and here's the deal. He was retired superintendent, he was a retired head of P E D rural schools. He came down here, he's actually responsible for all those little wolf things that are lining up that I've never seen anybody in at this point, but he's also responsible with people that love rural schools.
No, he's not. That's a question that...
That money was brought by rural schools. That, that, the gentleman that brought, that did that, was head of the funds that alluded that, and this is one that makes me the maddest. You're told that we are, we've misappropriated funds, we've stolen money, we stole $60,000. We misappropriated $60,000. I'm going to tell you point blank, as close as you can say, it's not only not true, it's maliciously not true.
Excuse me?
Wait. It's maliciously not true for this reason. Have the Secretary of Education called our business agent or called the business agent and... Those detractors that want us recalled, they're not going to believe anything I say anyway so it doesn't matter. The rest of you that came to the meeting and asked, I can only give you these figures. I can only tell you, this is what I know. And I can only tell you, I'm doing it because I couldn't tell you last time and I know you were mad, but...
They ain't got over it yet.
I know. And that's, that's understandable. But there's no reason not to be mad except the fact is, I couldn't talk to you. I couldn't break the rules. The minute I did, they'd say, "He didn't follow the agenda." So, that's the explanation I give. That's why I refer to her. That's my only reference.
Eric, may I ask a question in your comments? It's true that the $10,000 was used for an audit. Why would you waste the taxpayers' money when I know very well the audit of the last five years has come back clean? There'd be no reason to ask for another audit of us.
This is a valid question. It's a valid question. The problem is, it didn't come back clean. The reason is, the reason is, there are quite, wait, wait, I'll get finished. There are questions...
Really eats on me. I normally don't go to board meetings. I started going...
I see you quite a bit lately.
Because you said there wasn't any parental input.
I see a lot of... Oh, no, I love you. You got to understand, I'm sure this is great.
I've got lots of... Please, sir. You mentioned unrest. I've never seen this much unrest in this community, in a school board, in this school. Well, if I've sat in a position similar to yours, that sends a direct message. These are on happening sometimes. Your attorneys and professionals, I'm here for the kids where you are being. All of these accusations, I walk around and go to ball games, I see several things, I have nothing personal against any of them. If I go, when my kids come home, you know the commercial where they sit at the table and they talk? We do that very thing. And I say, "What's going on there?" They say, "Man, the kids are uneasy together. Things aren't right." Says Mrs. Shellhorn left. It's wild. And I should, you know what, whether you guys agree with her, disagree with her, whatever your reasons are, that was the one thing that was keeping this climate together. I'm saying my piece. If you've got some legal problems, I've been in them positions, hash it out with the big boys, leave the kids out of it. Let them have their pieces, it's a community input thing for the kids and the parents. You wanted parental input? You got it, baby. And you're going to see a heck of a lot more than this. Because I'm ticked. I don't like my kids uneasy. I try to stay out of it. If you do your professional job, but I see no professionalism taking place. I've heard this. I hope it never happens. There's a word, I looked it up in the dictionary, I'm not very smart, retribution. I hope that doesn't occur with any teachers or kids or anybody else that speaks their thoughts. Because I know how to go the legal way too. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, my concern, as I mentioned the other night, is it is about the kids. That's what I said. May I ask you a question? After I was at the meeting Wednesday night, Monday, my grandson was put on suspension for three days. He hit a boy in the stomach who shoved dirty wet leaves down the back of a brandy chute. He was out on the courtyard, there was no adult out there with those students at all. He was told to go to the office, 9:45. He stayed there all day long in the office. We did not get a call until 2:25 that he was in the office and the person that called this said, "I think your grandson is on suspension. I was told to call and tell you that, but we're going to send him home on the bus at 4:30." I thought about that and I called back and I talked to the superintendent and I said, "Would you please tell me what the problem was?" She doesn't know. She did not talk to my grandson one time. She did not ask his side of the story, what happened. Now, is that not, not giving him his due process? And I said, "He cannot afford to get behind in classes." She said, "He could be doing his work while he's sitting in the office." I said, "I thought if you put him on suspension, they can't turn in their work." Well, they can't. And I'm going... My comment is, I'm really upset because when I talked to her, she threw the very worst back at me and I said in that meeting about this needs to be about the kids. The kids, it's important for the kids, that you care about them, that you get to know them. You don't know their names, you don't know their names. I'm talking about Mr. Varela and he admitted that. All right, so, but that has nothing to do with this. What I'm upset about is there not a law that there has to be an adult out with students and these two boys, she tells me on the telephone, "If this young man wants to, he can sue your grandson for assault and battery." And you know what I said? Well, not even two months ago, that very boy hit my grandson in the temple and gave him a concussion the second day he was in school. I did not file assault and battery charges. I do not believe that's how you handle the kids. Call him in, talk to him and say, "Do you two have an issue with each other?" She let him go home on the bus. I asked her, "Do you know if this boy that my grandson hit is riding the same bus?" I have no idea. And I said, "Then why would you let him go home on the bus? If he's already upset and been in an altercation, why did you not call us at 9:45 a.m. when this happened so we could commentate him?" She did say, "You're right, I'm sorry, I should have called you." She did say that. But my grandson was never talked to and asked his side of the story. How can you suspend him when you're taking the word of a couple of kids?
Unfortunately, we're in that zone. I mean, I, I... Wait, wait, before you laugh, I, let me talk. I don't know anything about it, so to talk to you about it, I would be remiss, no, wait, let me finish, in trying to figure out what happened there. It is a policy issue that you take up with this, with the superintendent. I assume the, how does it go, first the principal or you're sitting at principal and then going into the superintendent. But the bottom line is, is, no, the bottom line is, it's a personnel issue and it's an issue that is serious, but it's going to have to transpire other than this format we can't talk about.
May I tell you what else happened? We tried to call her. When my husband got home, I told you what happened. We called her on the phone and I, my husband said, "Would you please tell us what Bridger said when you talked to him?" She goes, "I didn't talk to Bridger." And then she goes, "Oh, wait a minute, I talked to him in the hall." We asked Bridger, he said, "Yeah, I was bringing my tray back for lunch and she said, 'Where should you be?'" And he said, "In the office" and she said, "Go." That's all she said to him. So my husband said, "Why didn't you give him due process?" Because my husband has taught for 35 years, so he knows legally, you got to give the kid due process. You know what she said? "I am not going to talk to you about this. You get an attorney. You come and bring an attorney Wednesday and they can talk to my attorney." And I'm going, "We don't want attorneys in..."
Okay, wait, wait.
We not have the right to ask?
Wait, let's, let me get this going. There's a procedure. I agree that things are brought up, but we can't, I don't know the issue.
Well, can I do a copy of the paper?
Wait, wait, wait. I think that the format is, you know, something that I'm not aware of. But if you'll write down your name and I know it, I will look at what the process is and I'll make sure that we deal with it.
How do you make it better for the grandson?
Well, I don't know until I look at the process. But here's the deal.
You should know the process.
I should know the process, you're correct. But I'm telling you that I'm not going to pretend I have an idea, but I want it down correctly because as long as everybody's here, we're going to make sure we got our eyes on what we're doing.
I understand, you probably don't know.
Yeah, and I've got an idea, but I don't, I don't want to go...
Excuse me, but the superintendent knows the process and it addresses you one or two answers, ma'am.
Can you quit interrupting?
This is a board meeting, it's not a conference.
Wait, please quit interrupting. I'm having a conversation. Anyway.
It's a board meeting.
You're not the boss of me. And that's what we said.
Interrupting is against the law?
Anybody move this guy from the building?
I'm sorry, what?
No.
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 Move this lady from the building.
No.
No.
There, there, former board member President said, "There's a, there's a policy, there's a procedure. You call me and we'll do it." Now, this thing about for the kids, there's a lot of nice programs we try for the kids. We are for the kids, I try to reach out, but I'm telling you that there's a lot of the reasons for the lot of unrest that Carl talks about is this innuendo that goes back. And, and so I, I feel like, you give me that, we'll do it and let's keep the question thing going on.
Yeah, I can give you all the answers.
I appreciate it. We have traditionally had like a three-minute thing, anybody knows it, so we try to keep it at that because there's a lot of people.
Can I talk to you about it? I'm worried that it... Okay, I'm through. I just want to say, can I talk to you about it? I really feel it was in retribution for what I said at the meeting Wednesday night. And she threw the words back at me and I saw the meeting.
All right, let's, we'll do it, all right. And I've talked, you know...
I can come and talk to you about it?
I will come and talk to you.
Okay, thank you.
You call me and I'll come talk to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Manalis?
I would like to say, I went through the same situation when my daughter Pam was at school and we didn't go to the board, we didn't get mad, I just went to the principal, I went to the superintendent and I got straightened down. I did not have to get mad and involve the whole community. And she didn't start the fight. She was not, she didn't do it to beat the crap out of her. She didn't do anything and she was still suspended for three days. So it hasn't changed.
And like I said, we, one thing we want more than anything, well, the first thing we want is everybody have a good education. The next thing we want is a safe environment. So I, it is something that has to be addressed.
Henry?
How do you assess the job that you and the board are doing and how do you assess the climate that this school has right now?
I'll, I'll give you an honest answer. I have been real happy with Mrs. Kern, I'm going to quote you, thank you. You being keen to ask you, I mean, but I'm just going to tell you, ask, ask Mrs. Kerns why this was going on, she says, "Because I hate the board." Now, wait, is that correct that you said that?
I said what?
That you hated the board, that's why you were so involved in this.
No, I did not say that I hated the board.
Well, that's why you being...
I thought, well, my name is Mrs. Kern.
Kern, your, I apologize.
Secondly, your first, your intro about the why we're having the difficulties, we're happy because it's Secretary of Education's candor is letters. You, I was at Glenwood meeting and what Mr. Varela said in fact was, "No state employee is going to tell..."
That's what I, I thought I said right now.
No, you said a, a, an official that is appointed. He said, "No state employee is going to tell an elected official what they can and cannot do. We will go page through four."
Page through six.
And that was, no. He said page through six. He said page through four.
But, but the reason I brought you up, let me say...
But, and, and when you brought up the money earlier about me, I didn't ever ask you about that. Mrs. Newman...
The two of you are standing together, I apologize, but here's the deal. Let me answer Henry's question.
Mrs. Schreier.
Let me answer Henry's question. The reason I brought it up is, I brought you up because we're always talking these things rather than, than, than educational things. It drives me crazy. But anyway, to answer your question, Henry, I don't know what degree it is. I've come to every meeting, I've tried everything I can, I've gone to every deal that I do. I don't know how good I'm doing. Obviously, if you were everybody...
If you assess the school climate that we have now between students and the staff, that will answer your question. You failed miserably.
Yeah. You guys, that was a very eloquent speech you gave about how you're in the right about all this, but what really concerns me is that, I know you guys can't get along with employees, you're an awful lot of good people and I know that now that you can't get along with the Secretary of Education and she's the one that gives us the money. What are you guys, what are you guys there for?
Obviously, you're trying to get problems for these kids and as far as not getting away, there are a lot of kids or students I get along with, there are a lot of teachers we get along with.
But if you can't get along with the Secretary of Education who allocates you the money, then you have no use.
That's, that's not exactly the...
Well, it's to what she said in that letter, sir.
I would like to address your comment right now about you get along with the kids. When my daughter comes home crying because of her, because of this, the climate, the stress on our children, that's ridiculous. That's telling me that the board is doing something wrong because these children, they stand up for their teachers, they stand up for themselves.
And, and, and well, they should.
And we, we, as parents, look to the board to do the right. We need them.
And that's why I'm here, and that's why I'm standing here while you're talking.
True politician.
You didn't ever answer the second question that Henry asked.
What?
How do you feel that you're affecting these students? I want to know how you feel.
I, I feel very, very concerned, that's why I, I'm talking to you. Now, wait, I mean, you can laugh at me and that's fine, but I mean, I'm not sitting up here just for the fun of it. I mean, we didn't, I didn't run to this office so that I could sit here and misquote something. I didn't do this...
Have you talked to any of these kids to know exactly how it's going?
I've talked to, I've talked to kids that I know, I don't know all of them. I've talked to grade school kids, but it doesn't matter.
You need to talk to some of these seniors because they're the ones that are going to be able to...
I believe that my daughter was dismissed at the last board meeting and then had to get back up there to talk to Mr. Varela.
Dismissed? I don't know, we could...
She, she, no one would answer her questions.
Well, I try to explain, I try to explain that we couldn't answer anything. If it's not on the agenda, we couldn't do it. But anyway, charm, I, you know, I live in Glenwood. I come to the, I came to the game, I come to the graduation, I come to...
I've been to several games and I haven't seen you there.
Well, I wanted to...
I have a question, wait, wait, I have a question.
But the thing is, is I can't, I can't tell you that I've come to, but when we've gone and looked for people to come work here, we've looked for people in the community, we've looked for people that could come here, whether it's a coach or teacher, and I, we're trying to affect that rapport with the teachers and with the students. We're trying.
And I, and I'd like to know, and I have seen you at some meetings, but I'm not, I'm talking about the rest of the board.
Well, I mean, you ask me, I'm just telling you.
And I, I would like to ask the rest of the board, why don't you attend the conference?
Deb, Deb can stare all the time.
Deb is there every, every day.
Deb can stare all the time.
Thank you, Mr. K, what's going on? Wait, 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 wait. I want to, who's next?
Mr. Manalis? One thing I think that you have done is, we used to hear all the time that only the Glenwood parents were really supporting their school and I think really tonight, why the reserved parents are here also to support their school?
I don't think I ever, I personally, I was...
I've heard that.
I said the Glenwood did, but I, at the time, I was on the Glenwood committee.
I was, I was talking about, I listened to you the other night and saying about how you got Ms. Rachel's superintendent and I talked to some of the people that were on the committee and I, from what I understood, that she wasn't one even of the top five. I heard, I was just, I was just wondering if that was, I mean, even the people that served on the committee, I know it was hard to get on the committee.
Well, first of all, unfortunately, all those people on the committee know that they were under oath not to talk about it. Second of all, there were 31...
I don't think, it didn't say anything about Ms. Rick Trump, but they mentioned some of the other people.
No, no, they weren't allowed to talk about it. And if they told you...
Well, they got out some way.
Well, they were under oath not to and that's why we appointed those people.
They took an oath? Wow. Okay, well, that's not...
The bottom line is, is that all personnel items are privileged information, that should have never gone out and I, I wouldn't verify or not verify it. There were 31 applications, we looked at all of them, period.
Period. I know, I know you're the most qualified.
I'd like to say something. If you lead you guys, if you're setting up there, even want to get our community back together, bring Mr. Shellhorn back.
Yeah.
Well, quick.
Well, I have nothing to do with it. Neither does these people.
Who did?
Who did?
We're not going to do a personnel...
You're, you're bringing this, if you say we can't, then I'll point a finger at her. Bring Mrs. Shellhorn back.
You lead.
She helped us grow together.
Oh, I know.
Period. I know, I know you're the most qualified.
I'd like to say something. If you lead you guys, they're expecting that they even want to get our community back together, bring Mr. Shellhorn back.
Well, who did?
Who did?
We're not gonna do a personal.
You're, you're bringing this, if you say we're kidding, then I'll point a finger at her. Bring Mrs. Shellhorn back.
She helped us grow together.
Oh, I know, how are you gonna collect it on here, and what your purpose is towards these kids here? Because you have no contact with anybody around here, you don't support the community.
Your life is, according to your life.
Yeah.
Tyrannically dictatorship.
I've never seen you until.
This isn't gonna be a personal, we can't do this. I, I understand.
I don't think it is of us.
I understand, this young lady had two, I'll give that.
I've been standing up quite a while and have not been acknowledged yet.
I, I heard you talk once before, I'm sorry.
I made my comments, I have not been acknowledged to speak.
I was just saying, I was just thinking that under parliamentary procedure and all this, it's kind of turning into a debate, which it wasn't supposed to be. But, well, you're kind of cutting people off in the middle of their sentences.
Yeah.
And it's not very parliamentary.
I stand corrected, you're absolutely right. I just feel a need to somebody says something to do it, I apologize, you're very correct. I, I'll try not to.
Thank you, Mr. Kaler, I appreciate your knowledge. Um, Mr. Manelis, I'm very offended that you have not. And my question, first of all, is this money that you have supposedly saved in salaries, what do you plan on doing with it? You said you were paying Mr. Christman eleven thousand dollars a month, and by hiring that other superintendent or whatever it was that you did.
Are you asking me?
It was six thousand dollars. Where's the other five dollars, and what do you have plans for doing with it? What are the programs you intend on bringing to the school? And why are we going through all these salaries for savings? I don't understand where, where you're intending to use these monies.
First of all, that was last year's budget, that money's gone.
Then why did you bring it up earlier?
That was addressing the letter.
I know, and I'm addressing you with monies that are, should be saved by that salary.
That money was saved in last year's budget, so I don't know, you know, what it does. In last year's budget, whatever expenses we had last year, we'll cut it by a dollar.
Okay, I got it. Okay, after the last board meeting, when we flooded your guys' room.
I can't hear you.
Why didn't you stand up?
After the, after the last board meeting, when we all flooded your room, you said there were thirty-three people on that superintendent list. Why are there only thirty-one now?
No, there, there weren't thirty-three, yeah. I, I misquoted it, it's thirty-four.
Okay.
I have a question. I have been told by the students, and I have four children in this school, who have been, you know, really, Ms. Shellhorn has brought them to feel so secure at this school. She's been gone, we have this new superintendent who says, I have an open door policy, never once will she answer a question for any of the children, she says, I can't answer that, I can't answer that, I can't answer that. What can she do? If my kids cannot go to, if, Ms. Shellhorn, they love more than anything in the world, if they can't go to the superintendent and get an answer.
Why is she?
Well, no, the superintendent's all we got now, because they got rid of the principal for now, hopefully only for now. But she says, I have an open door policy, and I will answer any questions that you students have. They go in there and she will not answer one question for them. Every student in this room can testify to that.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not there and, and we don't know what goes on.
That's what they're telling you.
The teachers are still here for the kids you guys, too.
And thank God for that, yeah.
We are answering the questions, we are hearing you, I, that's why you're talking. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, it's an important meeting. I see guys sitting up there, I know it's sometimes a little hostile, but it's an important issue that we're addressing. Question here is, with President Ed Varela? Actually, Mr. Varela has his son on his birthday trip to Springfield. Whoa, whoa, I don't care what, this, you're not gonna jump this, because I, when he called and he said, we got the meeting, I said, you sat around last week, I'll sit around this week. Your son, his birthday party, I'm sorry, I don't care what, any, you can throw me out for whatever, family comes first, kids come first. And I know you're here, but that's why I'm here, and that's why he's in Springfield, but that's your answer. Next?
Yes, sir.
Here's mine.
I just wanted to know what the board's plan is for leadership and direction in the school, and how do we resolve this conflict and bring the morale back up in the school, take pride in our school? What is the board's plan as far as, I know you can't talk about any HR, but just the leadership and direction for the students? When you walk into the high school, there's nobody at that front desk, I don't think a student qualifies for being, um, leadership or direction. So I just want to know what the plan is for the board, short term, long term, um, what is, what is the plan?
Caught him by surprise with that one.
Two things. One of the, the long terms is this, I love the fact you're here, I'm not happy that you're not happy, but I'm glad you're here. The first meetings we had, there were very few people, but this is, this is what these meetings are for, and it's a good thing. Long term, um, I, I, I'm not sure, I'll have to ask the superintendent, and we find people have been being put in position to take care of the long-term frustration. The long term is, is trying to get everything up to par, where the, the, the programs are going good, the, the fact that we're introducing new programs. The other thing is, is to get some stability going on, and to figure out what the problems are, like you said.
You can't get stability until you get a principal.
I can't tell you how good it is to hear all this stuff, because I haven't heard. We haven't had this kind of, I mean, you've been on the board for four years, we haven't had this kind of input, and it's good. It's, so, my, my whole thing is, is the long term is, is you want the kids to have a good education and a safe environment, period. Yes, sir.
Um, what do we all have to do?
Can you tell your name, I don't know.
Lane, I'm sorry. What do we have to do to get Miss Shellhorn back? Do we have to walk out of school, or, I mean, what do we have to do?
We have nothing to do with that, that's personnel matters. You were telling in the beginning, personnel matters cannot be discussed, they cannot be discussed, it's the law. So, we will not break the law just because you want to know how we go.
Okay, wait, I have to say, okay, I know student council was on the agenda, we do not have time to talk. You guys may not know this, but I'm student body president, I'm pretty sure you don't know it.
Oh, I do.
So I just want to ask, student council, did you want to ask anything? Any students want to ask anything right now?
It's all personnel.
Talk louder.
I'm Megan, and I have a question for you guys. Um, you say that you're here for us, and like you said, Mrs. Porter comes to our game, you live in Glenwood, and you live in Reserve, why don't you come?
Come on.
Oh, I do come to the game.
Actually, I watched you freeze the death on homecoming out there getting homecoming.
That was funny.
And I came to the games last year, I was at the basketball game, and I missed two of the games from football because I worked and I couldn't drive animals, but you're right, I try to get everything I can.
It's more than just saying you're gonna be here for us, it's a good job. I haven't seen you at any of our games for more than ten minutes. You have to show that you're here for us, too, and I'm just saying.
Aaron, I've got a question. I see four board members up there, and I see two board members answering, and I'd like to, I'd like to hear some answers. From a board member, so we kind of get a feeling of, of what their thoughts are, or, problem. Ask a question. I think this lady's been back here a bit.
It's very hard to limit what I am going to say to what I'm going to say, because there's so much that I feel needs, uh, more commentary. But what I would like to say is, I think you are mistaken in your belief that the issue was, or is, or started with the Glenwood school. There are many of us who are involved with school board meetings on a very, um, regular basis. Before the decisions about the school, uh, the page of six and the page of four decision were made. Our, my personal concern is that I feel as if this board has done virtually everything they possibly could do to prevent the public from knowing what's going on, and the public from having any input into what's going on. There have been many meetings, I think a good example tonight. We don't, we no longer have a day that we can count on every month is the school board meeting, and will be there. We don't know why the school board might have chosen to have a school board meeting on a night when Mr. Varela's son has a birthday. We don't know why they would have scheduled a meeting at nine o'clock in the morning some days, eleven o'clock other days. And we don't know why they would not have public comment on a regular basis. And when I have, you know, made or asked, um, specific questions, um, I feel as if there really has been very little desire evidenced to actually keep the community informed, and help the community be part of looking forward to things besides Glenwood. I think very few of us consider that the Glenwood school is what this is all about. This is about open, um, and respectful, um, conduct of the school board's business, where people in the community and parents and grandparents can feel like they could say something, they could get a respectful, honest answer. And I don't think this is limited to the reserve parents. I think, I personally believe that the Glenwood parents were very poorly served, I've said this in a previous board meeting, when they were not kept informed about what was going on during the time there was an attempt to overturn, um, Scandera's canile. I think it's really not about the Glenwood school, it's about the school district, the students who go to school in the school district, and a respectful, honest involvement of the community in the process.
It's really hard not to jump in, but here's the deal. I was saying that the letter from Scandera was predicated by the Glenwood school, not this. Second of all, in our new policy manual, our meetings are the second Wednesday of every month. The meetings that you see come up, they pop up. We have to make a resolution based on something with finance, we have to make a resolution based on something with diesel. That's why we have these strange meetings. I'd love to only have a certain time and not have to run up and down the road for twenty minutes to make, pass something. But you're right, it needs to be scheduled, it is in our policy, second Wednesday of every month. Glenwood is not the issue at all, with all this, Glenwood was the issue in the letter. I'm just trying to give you where the things started. I said when I was running for office, this is the reserve school district, this is about reserve, and it's about Glenwood being unanimous in, in their approach to everything that goes on. I apologize if it seems like we don't have an agenda, but this is our second meeting, third meeting since school started, and we're finally have a, a specific day pointed out.
I have a question for you, Mr. Kaler, and, um, I was just wondering, um, how many board meetings have you been to? Since the time you came to a board meeting and advised them you were gonna see the school for two million dollars until the day that you were elected to the school board?
I was, uh, probably at, uh, no less than seven or eight meetings during that time.
Because I've heard from most of them.
Well, I know you have. Oh, yes, I, I, I have been there, and, uh, and since I've been, I've been to nine meetings, so.
So that's why you're on the board?
No, no, that's not why I'm on the board, but that's something that I can do.
Okay, Brandon?
I got a question for Ms. Rick Trump, or Rick Trump, whatever. Wait a second, this isn't fun, these are people's names, just like, or not, is it Rick Trump? Rick Trump, Rick Trump? All right, so Rick Trump, okay, sorry. Well, all of us, parents, or all the parents, students, everybody want Miss Shellhorn back, and it seems like you have the influence on a decision, and why haven't you made one yet?
I think it's a personnel matter, like, why is she gone more than?
Oh, geez, I can't discuss this.
No, I mean, all of us want her back.
I understand that, and I, and I certainly respect your.
Sir, I respect your concerns, and we will continue to, to look into that and do what is in the best interest of you guys, I guarantee.
I have two things, two things I'd like to say is, I know some of you don't like to hear this, but I've been born and raised in this community all my life, and I've never seen a community so torn up as they are now. And it totally breaks my heart, it needs to stop. Another thing is, that you need to understand, is Reserve and Glenwood are all the same district. Why have we ever tried to make this different, and where some people up here feel that the people down there are upset with this, that's not the issue, it never was the issue. Another thing I want to bring up is, I'm the one that asked for Dr. Holloway's contract, I never got his contract. I got a memorandum of agreement, that is not a contract according to the Department of Education, it never was. I also asked, how many board members were there and approved this, uh, contract? I never got an answer from any of you. Those are the facts that I asked in that meeting, and I still don't know.
We actually do.
But I do know that his contract was just an agreement, not a contract. And I know that things that you did in that agreement were totally wrong. Preparing the mileage back and forth to El Paso, which never should have happened, there's other things in that contract. And I've got a copy of the agreement, it wasn't a contract.
And again, it was drawn up by an attorney, they accepted it.
One attorney.
Our, our attorney drew that up, state is aware of it, and the state knows that it is not a superintendent's contract, you're correct.
I know that.
It is not, it never was meant to be, he could not have a superintendent's contract because it would make him unemployed.
You still have to do a form that's approved by the Department of Ed.
That's gonna be decided by the, by the attorneys. One, one part of them says this is significant, the other said it isn't.
And if I was.
Like I'm saying.
It's also my understanding.
I'm just going by what the attorneys have told us and the state has.
That the lawyer was not, you had not, you did not have a contract with the lawyer at that time. I know you did not. The lawyer did not draw that up, and that's a fact.
Well, I hate to tell you. Mr. Warhol?
Aaron, um, I think we'll go along with the spell, I'll ruin the scoring round, is Mr. Varela's wife going to school?
Yes.
No.
No.
I'll be honest, I, as, when this all started years ago and everything, the last thing I heard was, no, I have never asked that question before, so I don't know that.
Was that an issue from last year?
If, if she was, would you not feel that that was a call for evidence?
I, 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 I would say on, on face value, it would be a conflict of interest, and, and I would be uncomfortable if it happened, but I, I, if I knew that was the fact, I, I would probably have to ask an attorney, and I would think that it would be a conflict.
I know you're not gonna answer any questions about President Shellhorn, because it's personnel. But I think you owe it to the community to tell us if she was put on suspension because she was on the call, on the side of recall.
No, we can't do that, Ed, that's personnel matters.
But she represents a threat to the.
But, but let me, let me address one in an indirect way. I'm all for the electoral process. I don't, the, the, the recall doesn't bother me at all, I actually, I, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we got elected and. I actually, I, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we got elected and, and aren't going to get, be given a chance. Everybody, you know, we, we, you know, most of you know, I came to meetings for two years.
You already have.
Um, trying to, 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 to voice my opinion about things that were going on. So it is the, the political right of, of everybody to do that. I'm fine with it. Doesn't bother me at all. It's the electoral process. I'm a little concerned that it happened so quickly. I'm a little concerned that I don't really feel I've been malicious in my ten on the board personally. And I'm a little concerned simply because I hate to go through all that money. I would rather do this every day. Go ahead.
Let's, uh, let's avoid the recall. What do you want me to say now?
That's a good question, Henry. If, if we're already under recall, why resign? So that's stupid.
Show some responsibility.
I, I seriously doubt, a lot of these votes were for me here anyway, but I did get elected and I'm going to, I, I would do what anybody else would do. I'm, I'm not going to run away from the job.
Oh, please do.
I'd like to say that, uh, I'll be happy to do it. Mrs. Shilhorn has been here for years. She has done an outstanding job. I'm sure you all are, are new, well, you know Michelle. But I had opportunity to work with her some years ago when I was office. And she has moved up to pushing that. She is it every day. She knows her kids. The kids depend on her. And I hope you will consider it, for the kids sake, please.
Two persons, one to one. Who is the principal right now?
That's a person known as.
We even know him now. Um, I'm the district. I'm the principal of record when Mr. Payne is in class. I'm the principal of record when Mr. Payne is out of class. Mr. Payne is.
What do you mean? Is Mr. Payne getting paid?
Are you paying both principals?
We're not receiving any compensation for that, no sir.
Mr. Payne is not?
No sir.
He was actually.
On a teacher's honor.
Last Wednesday.
He's just serving as an interim at this point.
But it's on record, last Wednesday, Mr. Varela said that they were paying Mr. Payne to be the principal.
I understand.
It is on record.
There, there has been no stipend that has been initiated for that.
Other question. Is it the policy of the school board for the school board president to approach people and ask them to be an employee of this district? Or is there a procedure he followed from the principal to the superintendent to the school board?
I would think you'd have to follow.
That is not happening. I'm telling you now, that is not happening.
And, and you know, the ambiguity is this. I, I don't know what you're referring to, but I will say that I've seen people and I said, you know, you ought to come try this and work at the school if you're interested.
Mrs. Porter, what do you think?
Well, I know there's a procedure and I know that, um, we should not, the board president should not be asking whether or not they would like to work.
Are you aware that that is happening and has happened recently?
That's two personnel matters in a row being involved.
I have two questions, actually. Um, if you guys think what you're doing is right, why are ex-board members here going against you guys?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, that's why you get elected. You run against somebody for or against, I mean, I, Charma and I were opponents. We just have different points of view. That's why you run.
Okay, and I want all of the board members to answer this one. This one goes to all the board members. How do you feel about the students coming to this meeting and asking all of these questions?
Wonderful.
Boy. A politician answering.
We need to, we need to. There is, yeah. And if you're asking all the board people, I don't think anything's better than you coming, learning the rules, learning the deal and telling us what you think. We're here, I know everybody's going to laugh and say, but we are. We're here because we want you to have that, right? We want to be able to, and we want you to do that. And I think it's great. And I think, um, I'm not real sure that, um, Mr. Allison tried to encourage you all to do that. And, and when, when I heard that he was encouraging you to do that, I think it's great. In fact, there is, and, and, and we feel to have a student body president or spokesman come and talk to us. And I, I, there's nothing better than talking to you all.
From my point of view, I think it's really important. Um, not only did you come now, but periodically you guys try to come during the year. Because this is how you learn about how government and this is sort of the inform of government, um, works. You know, it's, it's supposed to have input from the people. And some of you are a voting agent, some of you are not yet, but it's a learning process. And I wish I had done this kind of thing when I was your agent, if I didn't. And I think it's, it's absolutely phenomenal that you're having the opportunity to do it. I mean, I wish it weren't quite under these circumstances. I didn't create these, um, regular meetings.
On?
Wait. Mr. Rabelis.
I'm sorry.
I think it's very important that the kids come and get involved. See, see how things run. See what you can and what you can't say. A lot of times, things are kind of a one-sided argument because the people can get up and say whatever they want. We legally can't say whatever we want. So it's kind of hard to take sometimes. Sometimes you don't realize why people make decisions if you don't know the whole story.
And that is why we're at this point now.
And sometimes you don't know who is making what decisions and who is not. Because you, you work as one. I think it's good for kids to get involved in politics and hopefully they'll be smart enough not to get into it.
This is a vote.
I want to know, uh, I'm addressing the whole board meeting. Is, is there all right for a school board member to go in and interrupt a class? And if it is, uh, and allow him to teach art or whatever? Can, can we either teach his stuff here?
No, it's a voluntary position and, uh, it was, uh.
Mr. Kayler, can I answer that for you? At the PGO meetings, we are begging.
How about letting Mr. Kayler answer it? The question is asked of him.
Why don't you shut your mouth?
Fat chance.
I think, uh, let the children speak first.
Um, I know last week you extended Mr. Trump's contract to 2014. And this morning she told us that she's only been here two, three months and this is her first time being superintendent. I was wondering why you extended your contract?
The process is that after six months, we renew superintendent's contract. We renew superintendent's contract every six months. No, it's July. So we got July and August and everyone knows. Programs we have coming up in December and all for the, for classes and things like that. Uh, we, we put it up to November, so we didn't interfere with any of the school process, okay? Now, that's why we did it in November. Now, the extension was an amendment to her original contract. Superintendent's contract should use it for three years. We did not do that with her to begin with. We did it for one year in order to see how things were going to go.
Five months. The reason I wanted to go ahead and do that is because of this, quite honestly. With the recall going on, with things going on, and with as many things that the state was trying to resolve going on, I felt in my mind that you needed somebody at the helm that the state could deal with because who knows where we're going. And in all honesty, if the recall goes in effect, you need somebody, everybody's been saying that. You need somebody that's here, knows what's going on, what's doing. And I, you know, I personally feel that, that the school needs somebody at the helm. You have, the superintendent is the controlling person. We're nebulous, as obviously as you know, with the recall or anything like that. So, um, it, it was appropriate to go ahead and make sure that no matter what goes on here, we did the evaluation. We felt we had time to do it. We voted on it. It was an unanimous thing and it's, she's there.
Mr. Manella, I'd like to ask.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me. I mean, I, you're doing what I do.
I'm sorry, I said, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I mean, I, I get it. But that's part of the reason simply was, is she's been here long enough, all the programs have been going. But it's really to have that, that solidity while this is all getting shaky. Because the state does have to have somebody take care of things. The state does have to have, and the community has to have somebody to take care of things. And you need somebody that can do that, that isn't broiled up in all this. That's why. You are.
Sorry, sir. You've got one more student. I'm fine with over my.
I have a statement. Mr. Rabelis said that it's hard to know why people make statements based on the, it's hard to know why people make decisions because you have to know the whole story. We're here trying to get the whole story, but no one will give it to us.
What I was referring to is, uh, you can legally discuss personnel. So if we can legally discuss personality, personnel matters, we can't really tell you the whole story. And a lot of times, because we don't know. We don't handle personnel. Thank you.
Okay, I have two questions. Um, so Mr. Payne didn't volunteer to be the stepmom in the school, but yet you can't make someone work for the school? I don't understand. What if he didn't want to?
Personnel. I mean, I'm really sorry. I'm not, I can't tell and tell you why Mr. Payne did or didn't. I really can't. I, I, I can't do that.
I know.
Harley?
She has two questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, this is from another student and it says, this is from Mrs. Rick Trump. And you say that you're doing all of this for the good of the students. Why? Because at this point, I have not seen you trying to have any relationships with any students. You don't know them and how they feel. You say you care and something.
She will.
Will.
Harley, right.
She stated that she was the argumentable woman in the thing with in-class teaching, right?
I, I believe so.
When, while we were in class, every, pretty much every single day, somebody would come in and ask me to pay to go out to deal with, um, principal duties while he was in class with us. And so far, in my personal Spanish one class, he had lost three whole hours of instruction time because he has been asked to leave and take care of the business that she says she's taking care of.
And on that note, um, I've been told by students and by parents that, um, our superintendent is not here all the time. She's not.
No, she's not.
Why are we paying for them?
Well, we have programs that the state requires that she attend.
What I've been told is that she's only here a couple of hours during the week and then she goes on to so.
It's a second, and we're not going to do that. I'm just not going to do that. I mean, she's, everybody here knows, everybody here knows that the superintendents are required to make meetings, period. It was the same thing over and over again. They have no choice.
How could she act as a principal then?
If it's mandatory for her to go, why wasn't Mr. Christian going to?
I know, but I know, but he would, he has to go to the meetings. He has to.
These kids ain't dumb.
This one can verify.
Okay.
I was wondering if there's a, they're going to take.
I, I haven't heard anything about it.
Mr. Varela wants to act in the classroom, condemning his, his children in PE. Is that correct?
I don't know. Um, I'll ask you a question.
Wasn't she there at the last meeting? Wasn't it the last meeting last week?
I was there and I didn't hear anything.
I wasn't there. I wasn't there. Go ahead.
I understand, but you've done something about personnel issues. One thing that didn't go unnoticed tonight, I haven't heard any teachers really speak up. I think, I think I know why. I haven't heard any personnel speak up. This is just shit that you pick up and mean. Get messed or nervous. With this recall and everything going on, they've got lots to say. And Eric Whitman on the phone, he's here. And you know what their question is? Are we going to be next? Yes, who is next? And there's a lot of uneasiness here, guys, and that's not good. And I think you all realize that. But there really is, it exists. They're afraid to speak up, say a word, do anything. And that, and my hat's off to each, every one of these teachers in here right now for trying to keep the calmness in the school that there is right now and maintaining it, because I think they're doing a hell of a job.
Thank you.
And they're awful concerned, if I want, and, and I hope they shouldn't be. That, that if they speak up or say something that doesn't sit right with them, you're next. You're next. That's a concern with the personnel, I've been with a lot of them. It's there, guys, it exists. You're not sharp enough to realize it, but I know you are. Everyone is, well, it's, it's there. It's sad. Shouldn't be that.
Can we get one more, I think? And move on? Go ahead.
My, I have, one of my daughters and several of her friends, we have parents that are worried about, they have coached Payne for their math class. They have been working on one assignment for over two weeks. And that's because he's being pulled out of class all the time and he's not able to teach them. So, I mean, I don't know how this is benefiting the school by not having Cindy back here to do her job so that he can do his job.
Okay. I mean, I mean, those are valid things that we have to address, but if we're just, like I said, we're in transition. I know, sir.
What's the answer?
I don't know.
Why would you appoint Mr. Kayler to the school board when he had or had a lawsuit against the school? Because I would consider him a hostile party to the school and a.
And on top of that, I think Mr. Kayler pushed down all of Reserve when he put us on the news. And that was my concern when he was appointed.
Actually, I think this lady.
I didn't get an answer. I know a guy here in town that they hired to do two bathrooms over here in the schoolhouses. And he don't have a contract license, he don't have a Florida license. I want to know if the board knows it.
I don't know my answer on that stuff. I, I, I'm, wait, let me ask you a question. I don't really know who did that, but I thought he was hired by the school long and scary to go take care of it, which is within the confines of employees to do that. That's all I know. It's a valid question, but I will tell you this. We will not let those houses be used until they're inspected by the state and the insurance people to make sure they're valid. So it doesn't matter who does. So it doesn't matter who does the work, if they don't pass inspection, we're not gonna go with anybody.
Can I get an answer, sir, to my question from the board, please?
Why did we appoint him?
Why did you appoint a hostile party to the board?
My, uh, this order, it didn't, um, I didn't know, and I don't think he, I, he wasn't there. Um, I, I didn't feel that he was hostile. I know he comes up here and teaches art for the kids. I don't think he's a hostile person.
My name's Kate Pleasure. I'm sure you all know now. I'm appalled. I'm appalled that you, this is, this is what I'm seeing here. You think we're incompetent? You really think that we're incompetent? Do you listen to the teachers? Are you listening to them? Do you hear them? Do you talk to them? Do you?
I do talk to the teachers, yes.
Has anyone spoken to my other class? Anybody?
Yes.
Anybody here?
Teachers are here.
Yes, I am.
One? One out of two?
No, I, I've talked to, um, over here, Tammy, I've talked to.
I invited, I did invite you to my class, but no, sir, I have not seen you yet.
No, I, I haven't been there.
Do you feel unsafe? I have heard these things. Do you feel unsafe walking down hallways in the high school?
Secretary Scandor said I said I feel unsafe.
That you are unsafe and the kids feel unsafe and they need to be, please, ringing the horn.
I've never told Ms. Scandor I feel unsafe. I have said.
What did you say? Please, because everyone's wanting to know.
I've been with these kids. I came up and helped them, you know, work through some things. I'm not afraid of kids. I'm not afraid of school. I do, I will say, after some of the things that are yelled at and to go out, I do, I would say when I walk in after these meetings, I'm sorry. It's a bathroom. You don't like when you yell that. You don't like them people talking to you. But I've never told Ms. Scandor I don't feel safe. Well, then again, makes my point, why I disagree with this person. I have never said I'm afraid of these kids.
She said that's what was going on, that's why you didn't want the Wendy, the students to come up here because they felt unsafe up here.
Never, 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 never. No, let me get some other people. I'm, I'm, no, I don't. I mean.
But for the students, we're.
I know, but I mean, the student aren't already gonna stand up, please, stood up. That's what I'm saying.
Does the student have a question?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, and then I'll ask.
Okay, I have two questions. Some of the students aren't sure what you have done to help us. Can you verify that? Can you, like, specifically, specifically, help you?
Specifically me?
Yeah.
What's that? Specifically me, I think, uh, one, we put the budget together for you, two, we hired superintendent, we have programs.
That is not fair.
Wait, that was the way you said.
She's not helping us any.
Wait, you asked the question. You have to, you, wait.
You guys, just go on, please.
I mean, you're correct. We hired somebody that we thought was very capable in bringing in programs in the schools. Uh, I think having the ideals in Mexico, which, like I said, having that thing, having a shop class coming on, having the keyboard classes coming on, getting Mr. Chavez to do the BPA back again. And quite frankly, I think this thing, having these students come and get tutored that are gonna play sports is a big asset. I really do. So supporting those things, I think, are some of the things that we, we count.
Okay, my next question is from another student. It listens to Ms. Rickchuck. Why does Ms. Rickchuck have a police escort in the board if?
So she doesn't have to endure that. I don't.
That was the last one, believe me.
Right. And, and so, I don't think she's afraid of you. I think she's afraid of just the simple fact that you're by yourself in a parking lot at night after people, no, wait. Don't laugh. When people are relaxing at you and yelling at you, I think you have a right for concern, period. I don't care who it is.
Eric, I do have to say something. I'm gonna say this fact. But Mr. Cushman's argument first, and then Ms. Shawmore next, I know is a vendetta for me. Because he tried to talk me into running for school board. He said, we need to hire somebody where we can get Cushman out of here first and Cindy second. He was continuously at my house, comes to talk to me about coaches. We need good coaches here. We gotta go forward. But yet we hire a guy who won two games in two years and his kids go to class. Give me a break, pal. And I'm telling you, I'm very sadly of the game. We gotta get good coaches in here that's gonna get our program back on the map. Where people, when they come play reserve, we gotta dread play reserve, not, thank God, look who we got first round. You guys, the board is always saying we're gonna move on with our athletics. We gotta move forward.
If the, if the teachers aren't at risk, please tell me why, not one, but two of President Verella's boys were caught with tape recorders in their classrooms.
Yeah.
They were, he deliberately tried to tape students. He told his kids, gave them tape recorders to go into their classroom.
I, I.
Oh, no. He's your president. You should know what he's doing. He's your president.
Come on. Whoa, let's be real serious. Somebody's acting on their own or being a kid. We can't know what you're doing with your child.
To find out if, if the Redvillas, I'd like to ask you a question now. Does this remind you of walking in on thirty years ago?
No.
When we had a board with a personal agenda walk into this school system. We lost our shop program. We lost our band program. We lost our athletic program. And it's probably taken us twenty-five years to get similar back to where we were thirty years ago. I have to agree with Mr. Martinez.
Could you back up? I didn't hear the last word.
I said you were heavily involved in that because you were students. You were very heavily involved in the shop program, athletics, and band, I believe. Do you remember how you felt? You felt just like these kids right there did. And I'll have to agree with Mr. Martinez. If, at that point, I would ask for you to, I would contribute like all of you.
This will be the last question now.
Hi there, my name is Stacy Jensen, and we are new this year to the school, our first year of having kids in the school. And for this all to be going on, it's just really hard to keep my kids here. It's tough. And so, I know you guys all, I don't know you personally, all of you, but I'm sure your hearts are in it. I don't know the history of what's been going on, but it's such a mess that, you know, respectfully, how can you start over without you guys resigning? I mean, I, and that, like I said, nothing personal, but how do you start from this, you guys staying in there? Like I said, I don't know all the details of what, why there's so much animosity in this community, but it's awful. And like I said, I don't know how, if you haven't answered how you might make it from where you're at now and make it worthy for me to keep my kids here.
Me too. Can a teacher speak? Can a teacher speak?
Do you know, can you please answer my question? I mean, what, what can you tell me on how it's gonna get better? Given the animosity of this, of the community and everything that's going on?
I'll answer that question. Uh, it's not gonna get better as long as people are split. That's what started a lot of this to start with.
Right.
People on one side thought they were right, people on the other side thought they were wrong. As long as it's split, it's not gonna get better. But the answer to how to make it better, I don't know. I'm trying to figure it out.
And that's, and why, and that's what I understand, you know, you say the division of everything, but as you guys be, you know, your whole heart into it, you're giving a hundred percent, you're there for a reason. I, I believe that. I don't have any doubts about that. But how can you not say, okay, this is not in the best interest of our community? We are gonna stand up and say, okay, we have to step back and let the school, let the schoolwork start over for the better of the community and the better of our schools and the kids. I just don't see any other way for it to get better, given what's going on.
Hi, Amy Springer, and I've been in this school district twenty-five years. You can imagine how many superintendents I've been through. And I live in Glenwood. And I have been working here the last twenty years up in this district. The last five years from March, the five years that Mr. Cushman was here, I felt really like we were becoming together. I felt really proud of this school. I am very proud of this school, the way it was. I thought we were all working together. We were working as a team. I was proud of the students. And it's just really upsetting to me to always hear all this bad mouth in the reserve. I'm tired of it. I live in Glenwood, and I, I've heard things for twenty-five years, but I am proud to be here. And I think our school district is going down now. It was good, and, and I, I just don't like what's happening. I thought we had a good system. I don't understand what happened back in March, but I just. I hope I don't get fired tomorrow.
Questions are over?
We have teachers that have.
That's part of the problem, guys. Your arrogance. You know, you guys keep just running arrogance towards, towards the folks out. You know, it gets dismissed. We don't wanna hear it.
We did give you a break, and, and we mentioned twice that it was the last question, and we went on with that. So.
How many meetings have you guys had that looked convenient to us? Need us stay or go out of our way? Just try to get to you.
Thank you, sir.
This previous board meeting, uh, you know, especially, some of the Glenwood parents came up and could not understand why there was such animosity between the two communities. And, uh, Mr. Manellas has mentioned that, you know, he's very angry because he feels like his boys' students are just being thrown under the bus. Well, I can tell you, we feel like our hundred and fifty-seven are being thrown under the bus. We've got some of the sweetest little kids down there, but you know what? We've got great kids here too. And we need to consider all of our children because primarily, most everything this board has done has been at the worst time, uh, you know, if you guys can do something that would benefit our school that I can respect you for, I'd back you a hundred percent, but it's been nothing but chaos since this group came on.
First of all, the Glenwood kids thrown out of the bus are district kids thrown out of the bus. They have to be anywhere. The fact is, the matter is, is I've always said I represent the whole thing. The issue was, that specific issue was the Glenwood school. We're just as concerned. I'm just as concerned when I hear about things that go on in this school. I come up and try to find out. We're very concerned, but again, you gotta take it in context. What I was talking about was a specific issue, five kids from Glenwood. I would be just as crazy. In fact, I'll tell you a real simple thing. I've had parents say to me, what if we send our kids to Glenwood? And I said, no, I won't support that. You know why? I don't want anybody that's in first, second, and third grade going over their mountain, spending an hour and a half each day. And I've told many people who said, well, what if we send our kids to Glenwood? I would never support that. The whole premise of the Glenwood school is for young children not to have to be on a bus for an hour and fifteen minutes, maybe longer in bad weather, going to school and going to school. That's our only concern. That's the only issue. I don't want anybody from reserve to have to put their child and go over the mountain if we can avoid it.
Then go over.
Wait, if they can avoid it. I understand they do it, but if we can help not doing that, we'll try that. Well, I guess.
You know, I, I agree with you, you know, this, us are kids. You know, you guys are sitting there having to make tough decisions, that you're not gonna satisfy the public. I'm bringing this lab, I served on the school board when we closed the Lutus School. I was the most unpopular guy in Catrim County. It's something that had to be done. Money, everything concerned. You guys are not taking care of the issue. You guys are failing the whole county.
Again, I, I, like I say, I think we have the funds to pay for the school. I think the fact that it was reduced to K to six and we're, but there are over twenty, and, 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 just to hit this subject real quick. There are over sixty kids in our school district that are home schooled that don't come to school. Our superintendent's trying to bring programs back into doing that. In Glenwood, we had twenty-six kids that could be in school, but because it was not from K six to K three, we, we don't, they can't come. So, again, I cannot tell a parent, we're gonna put his child or her child. But I do think they have the right to go where they wanna go, and that's why I want K through six in Glenwood, because I'd like to get twenty-six, twenty-seven kids. And I will tell you, I'd love to see them in the school open if we can afford it. End of story.
If the secretary of education says you can't do that, why push him? I mean, she's the one that hands out the checks.
No, no, this year, she already said she'll consider it for Nancy. She said she'll consider.
She's the one that writes the checks? You remember the two hundred and five thousand dollars?
She said she would.
You're not kidding?
Okay, that's. Now, we can't, we can't keep going on all night.
I, I don't care. I, I told them.
One thing that I see, you know, see everybody is concerned, you know, I as a parent is concerned because of Ms. Shawmore's absence. Is it, is there any way possible to maybe have Ms. Shawmore come and talk to the kids to alleviate some of their fears? I know there's a personnel issue going on, but to try to, you know, alleviate what's going on with the community faces, because it's her absence that everybody is feeling so scared of.
Sure, you can all learn after, yeah, absolutely.
As far as coming to the school.
She was told not to come on school proper.
I, I don't, I don't know. That's a super. So, young lady.
So she can't come to.
Personnel.
Who does the principal work for? You said, who does the superintendent work for? The board and community. Who does the board work for? And we as a community are asking for answers.
I, you know, I, I agree. It's a valid thing, but, you know, I'll take the shots, but that's why we're here. I'm trying, and George's trying to answer questions. And some of them, we're not capable of, you know, holding answers, but, I mean, this is good. I'm all for it. Uh, I'm sorry if you're not getting the exact answers you want. We're not gonna please everybody, but we're trying. Go ahead.
Next question on the agenda is the personnel, new hires. We have none.
Hello?
One more question.
Mr. Manellas, uh, we've heard from most of the members, but we haven't heard from Ms. Rickchuck. And we'd like, go ahead.
Um, in all honesty, this is a board meeting. It's for. She's required to be here. She's required to make her reports, but in all honesty, this is our board meeting. And I will tell you, this Rickchuck, you call her to.
only in the school, but in the community. We have been given a web portal that will allow us to do online classes that we will have control of, that will allow us to do not only classes for the students, but also classes for the community. In addition with that, I discovered that we have an identity problem within the schools. I found that we have six, seven different names for what we call ourselves. We didn't have a consistent colors of, we say we're purple and gold, and those, when you get into marketing, don't turn to find of what purple and gold is, and it is on different things that we do out there. I'm trying to create a website now, and quite frankly, I'm not a web developer. I am not an artistic person, so that a lot of the things on there require artistic talent. So I'm looking to help either with those in the community and students, students and the community, for help in being able to do that. Unfortunately, we don't have funds to pay someone to do it, so I'm putting it out there for anybody, please, to contact me for some help. The other issue I found out, by the way, is our logo. We have four different logos running around. There's a Yankee Doodle and some guy standing up. So we have to establish that we have the ability, once we do this and have a consistent, what they call a brand, we have the ability through the state then to copyright that and put it on all our material, and it is copyrighted material, that we can get royalties and people wanna do t-shirts and other things. But I need artistic help out there.
Hey, call Chad, he knew what he was doing.
Yeah.
Let the gentleman speak.
Yes, for help? Yes, for help?
Wait. Be nice. Go ahead.
Now I understand why people don't wanna help. I'm sorry. If nobody wants to, that's okay. I'm trying to do...
Sir, the guy who was doing it was gone. He didn't need no help.
I had nothing to do with his going. I'm working my tail off trying to help this school, and your disrespect was directed at me.
Correct.
I had nothing to do with Chad. I had nothing to do with his going.
JJ, let the man talk, please. All right. Please.
And I don't disagree with what you're saying, either. I actually had a conversation with some members of the board here about retaining him when I first came on board.
Whoa, whoa. Go back to what the gentleman...
So, I am telling you, I am here trying to help, and I have asked for help with the community. I am not an artist. I am not a web designer. If anybody out there has those skills, I'm asking for them to please contact me. I would certainly appreciate that. One way or the other, there will be a website, and maybe ugly if I don't get help, but it will come up. And we will get these online classes going, and it will take time, because I'm one person and I can't do it all.
Do you have a gentleman to your left?
Yes, sir.
With respect, sir, it takes three or four hours to put up an informational website, and that's not that big a deal. You could put up the website, add to it later. There's templates out there, thousands of templates.
Do you know how to do it, sir?
Sure.
Would you volunteer to help?
Yeah, I can do it.
Thank you. I'd like to get your name. Thank you. Call on asking.
Okay. Elisa, do you have your hand up?
Oh, I just was gonna mention that he might come back to the Modo School, and they're an achievement, they have a really good website, and they might be able to offer some assistance.
Did you hear that?
No, who?
Elisa said, "Talk to people, maybe at the Modo," but I think you already got some good help over there.
At the Modo School, they might be able to offer some assistance.
Right.
Glenwood Board.
If there's somebody more qualified, I'm all for that, but just put up a simple thing with schedules and school closings and stuff like that.
I know I can do that.
I heard several comments here about how important it is to reserve, Glenwood to be together. We want that. We all want to be separate, but we absolutely want K six, as was said earlier, too. We have about twenty kids that we can bring into the school district. And we're working very hard to do that. That's why we know it's important. They're not coming up here to reserve. They wanna come to school in Glenwood, and we wanna be able to serve them and we want you to work with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Financials, for a state, may I have the public funds account report? Okay, check register, check missing, any questions?
I got it. Next, sixty-seven, forty-nine, sixty-seven, sixty-two. Those are all... Name of the... All right, sir. Eleven forty-five, forty-one.
Okay, with the motion to, uh, new hires. We are in. Okay. Second to adjourn. All the favor. All right. Proceeding to adjourn.